...township. We called the town, an accident with township. And then mutual fire for Central City. We did have one, one of them get hurt with that fire. It's serious, but they took him into precautionary. And then I gave you guys a bid, one thirty-six. The lights in the hood don't work, the flashing lights. And they don't make those power supplies no more. And we replaced it just about a year ago for six hundred and fifty bucks. And they don't, then you can get one off the internet and it might last another year. So I got a quote to reuse a whole truck in LEDs. For four years, thirty-eight.
For how much?
Four thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars maybe.
Oh, this is it. Okay. Is that labor putting it on too, or is that yours?
Yep, it's labor.
Thousand? Oh, okay.
Well, if we down the front, that was six hundred and fifty bucks, you're keep throwing money at it. I would assume that this would actually make a guarantee in the area.
We're going to act our place and we're going to get about more, you know, we don't know. Need to get her fixed, you guys approve it. I tried to the second bid, and I called employees and everything.
Who these people are?
We see her out there behind the.
Town lane?
Cable supply.
Oh, okay.
They work on the last end of the order.
Does that apply any discussion on it? Question for you? The other guys, they didn't want you to give you a bid, or what's the story?
I called last week and I, I called this place and I called Raycom and they're like, yeah, well, salesmen call you. And they were calling, like, I need to buy a third bid.
These are the only two places around that do this?
Nine will be, it's closed.
Yeah, for that gray building, strictly your radios, not your, the lighting also.
Do we want to wait for the second bid, or you think it's going to be pretty close?
Yeah, your truck's got to have lights.
How are you going to run your trucks?
Yeah, your trucks gotta have lights.
Yeah, because they don't work right?
Right. Problem is, we get an A over here or something, you can guess whose pocket's going to be the deepest.
But you shouldn't even drive it, take it out on service without the proper lights. You're just asking trouble. I make the motion to be approved this. We gotta have lights on the truck that work great, just safety reasons, and plus, we don't want to keep throwing money after money on. Move that we accept the RC Systems bid for lights for, what truck is it?
One thirty-six.
One thirty-six.
Motion's been made, do we have a second?
Not a second.
And all have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. That's all?
Yep.
Any other questions for Steve? If not, Matt's not here, do you have anything for me?
No, he called today, said he wouldn't make it, um, I told him that January we're going to be working on budget. And he said he will be here, be ready for it, and.
Okay. Okay, Darren?
Yep.
You're on for ordinance three, base, two-one, base eight?
Yep, I'm just wondering what you guys come up with, with the questions and with the packet we gave you last month?
The things are, the thoughts are?
And in your packets, I think what, there was an article that was in City State a couple months, or about a year ago, I think, in the back of your packet. And it just stressed that, you know, it takes an ordinance change and be sure that when you change your ordinance, you put in all the rules you want at the time. Make it complete, because there are the good people, then there's the people that are going to try and slide under, so make sure you're complete when you're doing an ordinance on restrictions or requirements. And then I gave a list of requirements that I've gotten from City of Waverly, Knoxville, Cedar Rapids, Marion, and Hopkins. So those are requirements that we can use, can't use, might want to think about, but it would take a full work session at least to work on an ordinance.
Is something the council wants to address, or have you worked on anything?
Can I ask a question of, what does no chickens at large mean?
Can't run free like chickens.
Ah, cage-free birds. Gotcha. I thought that's what it meant, but.
Be a closure request.
I didn't know at large, I thought, well, if the chicken gets too big, I mean, I. It's just, it'd be a big, well, I've seen big chickens.
We want to skip a little workshop or anything, or?
What do you guys think about having a public meeting?
To discuss, to see how people think about it.
To discuss, to see how the people think, because we've got about half of the town now that you couldn't have chickens because they've got covenants. Let's say that you can't have chickens. So I like to have a public meeting to see, get everybody's feeling on it before we sit down and, and go to the problem, drawing up an ordinance and getting it approved by attorney and, because we're probably talking, I don't know, off the top of my head, I think probably a thousand dollars to get ourselves in position to go ahead with this. Time we did it publicly, three times and.
I think, I think both people get to give the pros and the cons, and I think that's, I think that's a good idea.
Hello, and what's the timing thing on that sharing, remember?
Public meeting?
Notification, you mean, with this?
Well, no, this would just be a public forum on what people think of chickens, there's no kind of thing, no, but a holiday probably isn't a good time.
No, I'd say.
I was going to say, well, our next day, announce for our next meeting.
Could we?
You want to say night is the meeting?
No. Could we get it to, like, I don't, I have a calendar, but if somebody could look, like, normally we have a week before our council meeting where we could have the hearing before the.
Council meeting's the fourteenth.
See, so we could have it the week before and get the public opinion, and then we could come to terms.
But then you'd still have to have a work session on which requirement you want, what requirement you want. Then it still goes to the attorney to be written up.
And then we got to find a place that, I don't know, do we find a, is it going to be big enough probably to have it? Or are we going to need a bigger area? I mean, that's.
I don't know, because see, Nailers and Graham's Edition both have covenants that say no chickens, so they're not allowed there no matter what our ordinance is. So they have no dog in the fight, because.
Yeah, but I know what you're saying, I mean, I'm just.
Rest of town, I don't know how to deal, I don't know what it would do.
No, I meant about, on how many you think might show up, is what I was trying to get at.
Yeah.
Could be just a dart, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
It would hurt. So, I think we have a public meeting and see what everybody thinks. Should we go ahead and schedule it for right after the first year? Or, nothing is going to happen really within the next couple months. So, it's going to take a little while. So either go after the council meeting, or?
After or before? Can we get it in before the council meeting?
Yeah, we should go. We should, I mean, we've got, we've got two weeks.
Well, one week really, on a Friday, so you have one week.
New Year's Day is on Tuesday.
On Friday.
I don't think you want to do anything.
On Friday. Since two thousand sixteen.
Come back here when you're. Oh, yeah, that's right. Friday, yep. So you have Friday, you got the next week, six, seven?
I think that's now.
Could be a short meet if it's, you know. Okay, just have set the time, let me know, let, we just set the time.
I want to set a date first.
Or that's what I meant. Well, the time's usually the same.
I think Wednesday's our holiday day.
Church night?
Yeah.
Is there basketball games, or any of that, wrestling, any of that?
Oh, we're going to fight, you're going to fight that no matter what.
If it's important enough, they'd probably make a point to.
They don't have to stay it forever.
You want to go Thursday on the seventh?
Why not keep it the same as our council meetings, it'll be easier to remember.
Let's go ahead and set it for then, let's go ahead and set it for Thursday, the seventh, to seven o'clock? Okay?
Good idea, Chester.
And then we'll, we'll have to discuss it after that, or whatever.
And after that, you see how it feels a lot.
Yeah. You have to, probably you have to.
It would be nice if we could get a feel for how many people are interested in doing this.
Do you have to post that in three spots? Do you put it in the, in two or three spots?
That will be in our minutes, and then we'll post it, well, I'll probably post this like at Bethy's bank, post office here. It'll be on our website.
I just wondered about the newsletters that come out, or?
Well, part of the minutes, but I suppose.
Part of the minutes.
Yeah, it's just a public forum.
Just going to say, I wouldn't do anything different than we do for our regular meetings.
If you guys know anybody, spread the word, and he'd be helping. There you go, go ahead, Mal.
I think it's a great idea, thank you.
Okay? Word for you?
Yep.
Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's go ahead and move on then, well, we got them, it's Urban Chicken, Kelly for the Urban Chicken class.
That's me.
You got it?
Um, I live in Marion, and about two years ago, we did this exact same process. It took us about four months in Marion to pass our ordinance, and we modeled it after several of the ordinances that I think you guys have in your packets. Um, and there are more that are not included there as well. But I teach the chicken certification class at the Indian Creek Nature Center in Cedar Rapids. So one of the requirements in Cedar Rapids, Marion, Lisbon, Mount Vernon, Ely, the local areas, is that to obtain a permit from the Marion City Hall, or whatever community you live in, you have to take a class that is geared towards keeping chickens in the city, because that's very different than keeping wildlife, you know, or farm animals in the country. So I'm just here to answer any questions you guys might have about that process. It's just one of the technicalities that's written into the ordinance is before you even can get the birds and can have them on your property and get the permit, you have to take the class. So, if you have any questions about that, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
During your class, do you go through and explain to them what the standards, what they have to build for a chicken house, or whatever? I'm assuming coop and whatever you want to call them, so you cover all that?
Yeah.
So they've got a basic idea what they have to do in order to comply.
It actually covers several things, so, um, not only do we cover how far, like, where the coop and the run have to be located on your property, like, you can't put it right on the property line, near your neighbor's bedroom window, you can't put it, you know, so close to a garage, so we go over where it has to be located on your property, as well as how many square feet you need per bird in the run, and how many square feet per bird in the coop, as well as like necessities that you need for the coop, a roosting bar, a nesting box, window, ventilation, no electricity, because we don't want fires and things like that. And then we cover common myths, like smell and predator protection and noise, things like that.
I was going to say, we're overrun with coops in your houses. And you make sure to cover that.
Yeah.
One quick question.
Sure.
For you to, is there a special training that you had for this, that you went through to do this? Or is it practical experience, or?
Uh, I would, I would say both.
I was just curious on your certification, on how you do it, I'm not questioning you by any means.
That's totally fine.
Something new I'm learning about here.
Um, well, I did, I don't work at the Indian Creek Nature Center full-time, so I have a different day job and education that I, you know, make money from. But when we passed the Urban Chicken Ordinance in Marion, I was like Darren and Michelle. I was just a citizen who really wanted this for my community. Um, and then after that huge process, and after keeping them, you know, for a couple of years on my own, the nature center approached my husband and I, and asked if we would teach the course. The lady who was currently teaching it was retiring, and they asked us if we would be interested.
That's all? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Any other questions for Chris Tyler? Maybe we get close to you, if we need you back there.
Absolutely. It was a lengthy process in Marion, like, four months, but I don't necessarily know that it might be that end of the year.
Would she be a good one to have to meet in case somebody brings up a question that could, that we could?
I have it on my calendar, so if I can, as a neutral party, of course.
I hear that.
Okay, so maybe we'll do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, thank you very much.
Bye, guys.
Thank you.
Bye, guys, thanks.
Thanks, excuse me.
I don't know if he'll be back, if he comes back, we'll get him in. Okay, let's go ahead, and anybody wishing to speak for ten minutes or five minutes here, wish you time?
Um, actually, I do have a question, if there's been any thought or consideration with the, the path now being complete with snowmobile control? I know there's a huge problem with having them on sidewalks, and with that being right in the ditch. I hate to see it get all tore up before anybody's really even used it.
We haven't, we don't have them yet, but we're in the process of ordering no motorized vehicle signs, so we have that, once they're posted, then obviously we have that enforcement issue in place, and there's, it's just like snowmobiles in town, I mean, that's all, about all we can do. If the sheriff drives by when they're on it, then citation issued, but otherwise, we're just, yeah. But the signs, we're, we're getting too bad.
It's a heck of an investment to have it torn up.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, if not, we'll go down to approval and consent agenda, minutes and bills.
Two additional ones. Masters auto.
Yep, Honda light generator.
Okay. Hundred and ninety dollars and fifteen cents, and then we did get Dan Sherman's bid, or invoice for the grading and pouring of the city hall street out there. And it come to twenty-one thousand seven thirty. His bid was nineteen something, but it's forty-six hundred square feet and he had fifty-three hundred.
It's a little more than what he expected.
Same price also.
I had him push it back to as far as he could put concrete, I figured while he was there, there was no use stopping anywhere short, so.
I move we approve the consent agenda with the addition of the two bills.
And then motion been made, and we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. City maintenance report.
Water, uh, chlorine's all looking normal, no issues. Installed two new meters this month. Tim Lang, uh, Tim and Rhonda Lang built a new building back there behind the elevator, and, um, he got to the point where everything was hooked up, so we put a meter in there. It'll be very little water use, but, uh, and then Dan Sherman's house that he built on Roosevelt, stuck a meter in that one too, so, um, two new water bills. Other than that, water all has been fine, no issues. Sewer, I had let Iowa Pump Works know that we wanted the old pump back, uh, the one that, that they said was unrepairable, because the other outfits said they, they maybe could put it back together, haven't got it back yet. I was hoping to call in today, and I just didn't get to it, but, uh, still looking at trying to get that pump back to see if it's rebuildable and usable. In the meantime, lift station's operating very well. No issues. Pierce Tovin did get the four valves put in at the lagoon, the two going into one that we always knew we had to do, and then the other two that go down the hill, uh, when we drain, that we found out weren't closing all the way during that project. So those are in and done. I've got about roughly eighty-five sump pump inspections left. I've got four or five scheduled that, um, I just can't stop any time, but we're getting down there, but like I put in the second notice letter, I'll be knocking on doors in January and, and February and trying to get those wrapped up. We have, there's been a lot, honestly, we're getting down to a lot of them lately that have, that were in need of repair, and they fixed them before they called me, so I think we're going to get into the meat of, of what we're looking for here in these last few. So, um, I have a couple of strange situations that we'll deal with after everything's done. Washer, clothes washer and shower running into the sump pit with a pump, but they swear there's no tile dropping into the pit. I don't know, I, it's, it's almost impossible to tell. Anyway, we'll deal with those when everything else is done, so. The storm sewer project up on Donald and Lori, um, obviously, if you looked up there, it all is nearly done. Very little concrete to replace, or to finish, the, the pipe is all in the ground, that part of the crew is gone. We had two little, three issues, um, along the way. One was on Donald Drive, um, at, uh, um, one thirty-one Donald Drive. When they cut the concrete, where the sidewalk meets the driveway end, they got off track with the concrete saw and cut into the sidewalk. Homeowner caught me and, you know, was unhappy. I said, we'll take care of it, that's, that's a mistake, it'll be taken care of. I went to Rachi, told them, yes, we'll take care of it. We, you know, the foreman knew it had happened, they just hadn't gone back to address it yet, so, um, I went back and told the homeowner that we're going to take care of it, and he swore at me and said, well, I ain't going to come back and fix it, you know, it's stupid, it looks terrible, blah, 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 cussed at me and said, forget it. And so, I told Rachi's we need to get there as soon as we could, Leroy went over and talked with him. By that time, the homeowner had patched it himself, used some, uh, patching material, and Leroy offered to fix it and said, whatever you, you know, take the whole square out, do whatever, we'll fix it. And the homeowner refused, and so I just wanted on record that the homeowner at one thirty-one Donald was offered, that it was fixed, to be fixed, and refused, and Leroy will attest to that if we need to down the road. So, um, the other one was, um, can't remember, I didn't get his address down, but he's been, he's asked about it before. Doug Holland is on the south side of Lori Drive. He said, Dave, you've been there a couple, two, three times, he's had a hole by that intake on the south side, and has been filling up for years, has asked council on many occasions, he's telling me to replace his driveway end because he feels it's settled because of that. I don't know why, I, I don't know the history, so, um, I looked at it, went and talked to Rachi's crew, they said, yes, there was hollow spots and areas where the dirt had sucked out under the concrete, they did replace right next to his driveway, where the storm sewer intake is. So I, I told them to replace his driveway, and they haven't done it yet, but I figured we're in the, in the act of replacing, repairing this erosion problem, so, you know.
You're going to solve that sucking the dirt away?
Exactly, so it's all, should be solved, and then, and we're only going to the first saw mark in his driveway, so. Did you have a question?
I was going to say, that's, I'm glad, because I think it's been going about five years.
Yeah.
Six years.
Probably longer than that.
Or longer than that, but at least five or six that I can, that I actually was going up and looking at it and everything else.
But when you're not.
You can't fix the, I mean, there's no reason to fix his driveway if we haven't fixed the problem.
That's exactly what I thought, we're in the process of cleaning all this stuff up, so that needed to be done, so I told Rachi's to do it, that's one piece that they have left to do, and they have half of one of the crossovers you have to pour, and, and they got to fix around one of the manholes, and then they're going to be out of here. The third issue came up this afternoon, they had poured, um, driveway at one fifty-five Lori Drive, uh, this morning, wrapped up, put their barricades up, and left, the wind blew one of the heavy pylons over, and the handle scarred the, the surface of the, of the, um, concrete. Homeowner's very upset, I don't think there's any reason why I can't tell you who it is, it's Steve Sodaawser. I think we all know how fussy he is. He's not happy at all. I went up and looked at it, I called up Rachi's, Tim, the estimator, came up and looked at it. They won't, they won't do it, they won't fix it, it's not bad enough. It, my opinion is, the city shouldn't either, it's not bad enough. Yes, it's a shame, because the driveway end is gorgeous, all except for that, and he did complain too that the wind had blown some very light dirt over the end of the driveway, and so it's got a little brown tint on the end, which I'm pretty sure we all know will go away.
People pay extra for that to be put on their car.
Yep, tinting, absolutely, but, um.
And we make sure, just so you all know what we're dealing with.
How big, how big an imperfection are you talking about? This six inches, six feet?
It's, no, it's that long, and it's no more than a quarter inch deep. There you can see the brown tint on the edge. That's the, that's, no, actually, that's not the damage, that's on our city street. One, one of them went over on our, on a chunk they had poured in the street. Yeah, that's Steve's. He's very mad about it, so I want all you to know, and I recommend that we don't do anything to correct it, because it's not going to impact the life of the concrete, and that driveway end is, is our own. So, it's not his, I mean.
That's the city, city property.
It's the city's, because it's on the city's.
You see approach. It's just.
From the street to the side.
Yeah, and if you're down there, honestly, it isn't, and Rachi's guys, when they come tomorrow, are going to try and grind it out and feather it and make it look better, so.
Usually you can take a stone or whatever and just.
You can.
You're right. In a year, you probably won't even hardly be able to tell.
I was going to say, wait till you plow snow off at this one, you'll never know it.
There, again, I just wanted on record that he's, he's upset, so, um, and I told him I had bring it up to you, which I did, and so. And the worst, the worst impressions are actually in the street. And they're, they're maybe three eights of an inch deep, and there's two of them, because the thing bounced, going to hit, obviously. It's not going to, yeah, a couple trips with the snow plowing, you're not even going to know it.
Well, that's, that's, that's more than a couple.
Well, yeah, well, no, I mean, the part that's sticking up above this is mental, you know, so, and I think the dirt will go away, and whatever. So, um, other than that, everything with that project is looking fantastic, and in the process of dealing with this incident today, um, Tim let me know that John Rachi had just decided he's going to, I don't know what you want to call it, donate whatever topsoil to finish Lori in the parking areas. He moved, when the crew took the topsoil off of Lori, when they started digging and moved it to Donald, that's why we have topsoil on Donald, and, but there's no decent black dirt left from this project at all, and evidently Rachi's has a pile of it, and John had told Tim I was planning on bringing up black dirt, and another reason why I didn't press it with Tim on this little, you know, the, the pylon falling over thing, it's like, wow, that's a big deal, because black dirt, if we got to go buy it somewhere, can be a huge deal. So if they're going to bring up black dirt and put it in place, that's a pretty nice little bonus. Granted, the project's going to way exceed what we hoped it would, because all the concrete. Granted, the project's gonna way exceed what we hoped it would because of all the concrete we did on Donald. In your uh, expenses, I think we paid the first um, portion, and that's just Donald Drive. So if you look at that number, that exceeds what we had hoped the whole project would cost. But Lori is less pipe and went fantastic, and there was only one fairly major piece of concrete outside of that curb and gutter they had to cut off, it had to be replaced, so. I think Lori will come in towards the bottom end of what we were hoping if you if you wanted to separate them and take a look at them. So that bill will be coming shortly too, he told me, as soon as they they're close enough now, they pretty much know what it's gonna be, and so that one will be coming our way pretty soon, so. But other than that, I think they did a great job, I think they did an excellent job of keeping everybody in and out of their driveway during the project, and um, I checked every day and I feel like it was done right and and looks really good, so. Any questions on sewer stuff, storm sewer stuff? Okay, uh, maintenance, the Altorfer, I don't remember if we went over this, if he had been here last meeting or not, but Altorfer was here, he had all the generators. The lift station one, the battery was dead and the and the charger was was broke. That's taken care of, I've got the timer set up or the the exerciser, so it's starting every Monday morning at ten thirty and running for an hour, shutting off, the one at the shop was working fine anyway, but the service was all done and the oil sample came back great, so no big deal there. Uh, but the fire station one, um, when he first started working on it, it wouldn't run, and he couldn't get any propane to the carburetor, and that's just a little Honda two-cylinder air cool. Couldn't get any propane, so he got a new mix, determined it was a mixing chamber, so he got that, and now he has propane at the carburetor, but no spark, and he and I talked about it, and he says, you know, there's seventy-five screws that need to come out just to get the shroud off to get to the coils, which is probably the problem. Said, you can pay our hourly rate or, and I took the hint. I've got it torn apart, coils are here, they came in this afternoon, hopefully I'll have it running tomorrow. If it's not the coils, I don't know what it is, because I've ruled out the safety switches and all that business, um, they're all functioning as they should, so hopefully it's the ignition coils and that thing will be running tomorrow, so. And then I'll get the exerciser set up for it too, Steve told me when I talked to him a couple days ago that he doesn't think that generator's running long time, like two, three years maybe. So I don't know why it was let slip that the exerciser didn't stay on, but he says it hasn't run for quite a while, so. Hopefully we'll have that one on. We uh, as you I'm sure all know, we grabbed a tree donated by Bill Keel out of his yard. Uh, had John help me, and we went and cut it down and brought it downtown and set it up for Christmas tree. That went well, no mishaps, issues or or anything else. And the decorations we got from Central City, that all went pretty well, um. I, we're still waiting on bulbs, um, we need some more bulbs, we, this town was sold out of green and red light bulbs. I tried, couldn't buy it, I ordered them online and then they got back ordered, so hopefully they'll be here within a week, but um, I had Mike Hindley make brackets for them, he got them done in like four days, it was, they were perfect and and he did a nice job and I painted them, and then uh, Curtis and Matt Matt came to do the electricals, so they stuck the bracket up and hung their, did their electrical work, put the bracket up for the decorations and hung the the decoration, I just kept the decorations coming to them as they went pull to pull, and that was uh, two, day and a half project and those were all up, and um, I think uh, depending on how they get through this season, we may wanna consider some of those decorations uh, taking the old wiring out and maybe wrapping them with LEDs or something for future years, but I think for this year, they're looking okay, and when I get the bulbs, so we can get more of the bulbs working, they'll look pretty good, so. Far as streets go, filled a few potholes. Um, our first big snow went well, John Arie did a nice job. Everything worked as it should, didn't have any issues with equipment. Everything went good there. Alliant installed the new uh, streetlights, just almost immediate, it was what, four days maybe after they got the resolution back to them, they had the lights up. I've had a lot of good comments. Most people that have been on the trail in the dark have said that this is plenty. I've had one, one person say they wish they were brighter, um, but other than that, everybody says, I mean, that it's more than enough light, it doesn't look that way driving down the road.
It doesn't look that way, no.
But my wife walks it every morning at five thirty in the morning and she said it's thumbs up, it's A, okay, no problem, and Joe's been on it too and and he says.
Well, then the next day, when you're on, you're coming into town, not going out, but when you're coming into town, you look over there and you can see the trail perfect.
Mm-hmm.
So you know it's, of course, it was foggy that morning, I know.
Well, I think all we need to do, you you just need to know, see, be able to see to stay on the trail and see that if anybody's coming, you know, on, anyone else walking, it'd be nice to know if someone else is walking towards you if you're out there in the park, so.
Is Sherman bad for in that or?
Yeah, he's going out tonight when I come up.
Right now.
Yeah.
Okay, Skidloaders got lights, so, yes, sir.
I think we should thank Bill Keel publicly for the Christmas tree.
Yeah, yep, he was tickled to have it out of his yard and it's pretty darn nice tree.
Yeah, it's a nice tree.
Yep. Uh, let's see. Oh, and um, I got LL Pelley stopped by out of the blue and brought us a price sheet for uh, this is the chip seal guy for next year, um, and if we choose to sign this, all it does, it it doesn't lock us into any work, but it locks us in on prices for next year if we need to do any chip sealing or um, deeper like uh, having to repair the base and chip seal. And that's for a base repair with a single seal coat is three fifteen a square yard. That's if it's in bad enough shape, they need to break it up, pulverize it, uh, smooth it back down and and then put chip seal over it. And if, and just a single coat of of chip seal, which is what we normally do on on a couple of our chip seal areas is two oh five a square yard, and we looked that up, that's eighty-one cents a square yard cheaper than what we paid Klusner last year for chip seal, so um, Klusner was here today, but he didn't leave us any prices.
Be interesting, because he'll do the same thing, where you just sign it, you're not locked in, but it just locks you at a price if you go in.
So, and then they have a price of cold patch, uh, cold mixed patching material delivered and placed, which I would assume is is more in the instance if they're doing a chip seal and there's potholes that need to be taken care of, they'll they'll haul it in and fix the holes first and then seal it at two twenty, two hundred and twenty dollars a ton, so um, I don't see any reason, when we're not locked into to buying anything, not signing this, but since it just came yesterday, I thought I better bring it up.
Did he say anything about filling cracks?
No, he did not, and LL Pelley's very divided as far as I, you know, as far as, he doesn't have anything to do with, I mentioned something about asphalt out here, and he's like, oh, no, that's that's not my, I'm I'm the chip seal guy.
Know each other.
Yeah, I'm the chip seal guy, so I assume that this track seal might be a different division too, because he said nothing about it, so. But seems fairly mundane, just basically that locks in your price for the year, I suppose there's a chance you could lock in this price and if you'll continue to go down, maybe if you get it done cheaper, I suppose, but it at least locks in a a maximum amount you're gonna pay for those services, if if we even need them, so.
Yeah, I mean, is there any reason we wouldn't sign that or?
No, no, I I think it's, I think it it would, it's good to do it, I just, you know, this is the first I've been involved.
Have they ever done that before? Have they, from them?
We do use Klusner.
Klusner's been.
Well, Pelley's never really come out here much either.
But Pelley's been doing Central City and Lockrenham now.
I think they're trying to broaden out their base a little bit.
Yep. And I don't know if we, you know, I, we'd have to look back at history and see how.
Used them before.
You know.
Been quite a while.
But when you're eighty-one cents a square yard on that basic single uh, seal coat, cheaper, I mean, yeah.
I don't see any reason, I'll make a motion to sign that. I just did, I'm sorry, David.
All those in favor?
And the last thing I have is the concrete project done, obviously, um, I put some, threw some erosion stone up there against the east end today with this two-inch rain forecast, hopefully that holds up with that water roaring off that thing, because I figure that's gonna be an issue, so hopefully, hopefully that's in the right place and I'm doing what it's supposed to do, so.
Slow it down immediately.
Yeah, it's gonna be like a shooty-shoot.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It's like, get your kayak.
Well, we're we're gonna, we're gonna break it up and send it a lot of different directions, so we'll see, because that that's some big rock I put in there, four by nine, they call it, so. It uh, it should slow it down to spread it out, yeah, but it doesn't have the fines in it, it's just, they call it erosion stone, actually, four by nine is the size, so. Yep, so that's all done, I can't think of anything else, so.
Any additions for me?
Are you busy scheduled tomorrow?
Not terrible.
See time I get done, but we just go down to this where our pump is and just grab it.
I think it's clear in Ankeny.
Oh, is, oh, is that clear?
Yeah, that's where Iowa Pump Works is.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there definitely could come the instance that somebody's going that way, I mean, who knows, whatever.
I will be.
If you got a vehicle to haul it, I mean, it is a sewage pump, you know. Yeah, if you're taking your pickup or whatever, yeah, we can call them, and who knows, maybe when I get hold of Tony, maybe it's just simply because they haven't had a truck coming this way.
Well, are they gonna charge us to bring it back?
No, they shouldn't, I hope not, I hope not.
Because I got a son-in, a future son-in-law that's gonna be coming to our house for Christmas that maybe, and they in Des Moines.
Oh, yeah.
And he has a pickup.
Yeah. Yeah.
I can always see if we can, I'll see what we can work out, we find out, if they're gonna charge us to.
If, well, we all keep in mind, if you know somebody that's gonna be going to Des Moines for any reason and and gonna be there during business hours to pick it up, we can, we can get it, that's not a problem.
He travels around, he's probably got a brick project up in Ankeny going on now anyway.
Sure, sure, so, yeah, that's that's fine, I just would love to have it back so we know is it rebuildable, at what cost, or do we need to be looking for the the replacement pump, which I still have the estimates for, uh, you know, a direct replacement from the two companies, so I mean, it wouldn't be hard to get one bought and have one on the shelf, but I pumped down the lift station again the other day and those check valves are not leaking, that day that he peeked in there, there must have been something in in that one and it came right out, so. That's pretty much all that is, but.
They do work when they don't, actually.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
All right, now it's moving on then to number six, item number six, setting hearing in for the civil penalty.
This is just like when they got busted last time. They set the hearing, send them a notice and they can either pay or run in their license for thirty days and let us know before they actually have a public hearing.
So if they respond, we don't have the hearing.
Right.
Gotcha.
If they had left them, they just sent us the check and we. Yeah, it's like cost, and I called the attorney general's office and it is up to them, it's their option to pay the penalty or lose the license.
Do you want to set a public hearing for that? To.
Yes, we need one to do last time and give some time to get some money.
Next meeting, okay. That's uh, January, what, fourteen? Okay. Uh, okay, going, moving on to resolution eleven days, two oh one five days four approving street lights.
You guys basically did that and then Michelle had said they needed a resolution in writing, and you've signed it, so it's just passing it. The purpose of having a.
Before they could do it, they would, they wanted a resolution. Do we have a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion if we approve resolution eleven days, two fifteen days four, approve it to street lights.
Motion been made, do we have a second?
All specialists.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carrying. New um, library contract.
Well, she offered, here is a sheet, to come out and schedule a talk with us and probably should talk for, this was signed by Edith Wall and Joe Rasmussen.
That's about a few days.
Yeah, so we may want her to come out and review what our contract is or what they're doing, because that could go back a long ways.
What's that, that, see if she comes next? She didn't have a price on per capita?
See, she doesn't have a price, it doesn't have, I mean, is it Marion or Cedar Rapids?
Cedar Rapids.
Cedar Rapids.
It's Metro, it's all.
It's Metro, it's all the same.
Hiawatha, Marion, Cedar Rapids.
That does not include lending book show that we can. Is this just Cedar Rapids, the way this reads?
Well, at that time it did, that was back in ninety-one.
This is what's on the books, right?
Yeah, this is what's on the books, no, we wanna renew this.
But this is, this is just Cedar Rapids though, isn't it?
Yeah, this was in ninety-one.
Think we probably should revise that to the Metro library system.
Yeah.
If you can, yeah.
So we'll have her come out and.
Do you want to have her come in next meeting?
Okay.
Let's just do that, get her in next council meeting.
Or if she's available, I think.
I will call her, have her do it.
Do we pay an annual now, or they just haven't been billing us, is that?
They haven't been billing us, since the flood, they lost our record. So they didn't know how much to bill us, and one time they sent us a three hundred dollar bill. We paid it, but it's supposed to be like three thousand.
Do we let the sleeping dog?
Thousand a year.
Three thousand a year. Yeah. So we need to know, I mean, this has no price on it, they haven't billed us, I think like three times since I've been here, so maybe twice. When I called down there, they said, well, we lost your record, we don't know anything. I think she found our record.
Any other questions? Well, it's mostly no, this will be Joe's, Joe and Tim's last meeting. I'll be stepping off and we'll have two council meetings coming in January. We have a certificate of service for you. For Craig here, recognized appreciation of twenty years of service in the L. Municipal Council. Andrew Kim. All right, Joe, Joe Charon, he's got eight years of service, he's been here, so.
Well, I got homework for you guys.
You got something else?
Well, well, when you're on that there, I'd like to personally thank both of them. I mean, we come in a very, very tough time, we had no money and no papers to follow. And we've accomplished a lot since then, I mean, we've got decent equipment, debt-free, we've got forty percent of our sewers lined, got our water tower painted, we've got the sewer done, we've got a lot, a lot accomplished, and it took a lot of time and a lot of effort on their part.
I agree.
Been a good council, and we've got a lot accomplished, so.
And then we're gonna accomplish more.
All the cracks, they're hurting our backs.
But should we do budget?
No.
Um, January, I imagine our budget workshop would be after the next meeting, but this is something that you can get started on, review it all, um, we do want to.
Gee, thanks.
And if anybody's got any questions, come in and talk to me. So we've got some idea before we start, and then with the Rachi's project, we worried about how we're gonna put it in the budget, well, we had budgeted three hundred and fifty thousand under capital projects, street improvements Roosevelt, well, we just made it street improvements Donald and Lori. So it's been in the budget, um, we're a little short in that account, we're at twelve thousand in the hole, which is short easy. We can transfer, like our local option, we have a hundred and thirty-one in there, we can transfer. We can transfer, like our local option, we have a hundred and thirty-one in there, we can transfer over because it's fifty percent tax relief, fifty percent infrastructure. We've also got enough in general, we can transfer a hundred thousand somewhere. We've got another thirty-five thousand in capital projects, we've got a lot to think about on how we can build back up that account and pay everything off and we'll do this either at the next meeting or at the work session. But it's just, we've got a lot to think about there on how we do it and what we wanna do.
I make the motion that we adjourn and have some cookies.
Motion made, try to get the second. All those in favor?